Can you hear me? Is this working? Can you hear me now? Good? Okay, we would like to recognize, we had seven summer grads this year. We were fortunate enough to have one that made it today. We were supposed to have a few more, but at the last second they weren't able to make it. But, we would like to recognize Scout Schwab. Come on down, Scout. Scout is a student who worked hard and focused in class. She had some challenges, and she didn't let them stand in her way. She was always friendly, positive, and came to school with a smile. Scout was open and inclusive to all students in her classroom, and went out of her way to be encouraging to others who were shy. She loves animals, and she has been accomplished equestrians since she was a young girl. After graduation, Scout wants to explore being a veterinarian for large animals, and be involved in a therapeutic horsemanship. She is very proud that she was able to graduate early to fulfill a promise she made to her grandpa before he passed away. Congratulations to Scout Schwab, 2021 Liberty graduate.
All right, up next is Missouri, our Mo AMP recognition.
Yes, State Tech out of Lynn, Missouri, has partnered with the state of Missouri to build a mobile training facility. The trailer has been used throughout the state of Missouri and helped provide free training for those seeking out specialized job skills. The training includes computers, electronics, motor controls, industrial maintenance, blueprint reading, rigging, industrial wiring, and HVAC. It has successfully been used for recent grads and adults who are looking to start new careers. The Mo AMP program has partnered with Pierce Hall to provide free grant-funded specialized trainings to individuals that are recent grads or have graduated from Wentzville and earned their high school diploma. Currently, this free program is open to any former graduate of Wentzville and any of their families, as long as they have that diploma. We have four students here, two of them made it, but four that graduated this summer that have successfully taken the class this summer, met the requirements, and have earned certificates of completion. So, we'd like to recognize Logan Werning and Aiden Tate. Come on up. The program will now be working with these young men to find jobs to fit their newly acquired job skills. I will say, just since we are on TV, if you're interested in this program, please contact Pierce Hall, myself. If you have a student that's close to graduating, or you're looking for some additional job skills, we will have another Mo AMP course this school year, and love to have you. It's free. Gentlemen, congratulations.
Please join me in reciting our mission statement, "Learning Today, Leading Tomorrow." Up next is Public Forum. Each resident of the district requesting time to speak during public forum will register his or her name, address, and state the issue to be discussed with the recording secretary prior to the meeting being called to order. The board president will call the speakers to the floor. Each speaker shall give his or her name and address upon recognition by the president. Speakers will be allowed three minutes for their presentations, unless extended by the board president. If more time is required for presentation, the citizens should consider district policy for placement on the regular meetings' agenda. Due to the possible number of speakers during public forum, the board president may limit or extend the speaking time. If a number of speakers wish to speak on the same topic, the group shall select a spokesperson to present that information. A speaker may address the board only once during public forum. Speakers may offer such objective concerns of the school operations as they deem appropriate. The board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel, nor against any person connected with the district in public session. Matters involving personnel shall be discussed by the board in executive session. An employee of the Wentzville School District may address the board by following the public forum guidelines, regardless of whether the employee is a resident of the district. I'd also add, per our recent policy adjustment, that all signs are required to be to the back. So, if there are any signs in the front, if you would please move them to the back of the room. First up tonight is Sruthi Ramesh.
My name is Sruthi Ramesh, and I live at 230 Chestnut Hill Drive. In the past, I've interacted with the school board in both personal and professional points of view, and I respect the decisions that are made by this panel. Even so, I know that the plea that I make here tonight will likely fall on deaf ears. But I cannot go into my senior year in the upcoming week without even trying to stand up in the name of science or what is moral. In July, the Wentzville School District made the decision to make masks optional for all students and staff, regardless of vaccination status. But since then, the COVID-19 cases have doubled in just one month. This new Delta variant is on the rise, and it is a viable threat to the status of our school district. Continuing with this new mask policy into the 2122 school year is reckless and undoes all of the preparation we've put into maintaining a five-day-a-week learning schedule within Wentzville buildings. Given the rise of this more lethal COVID-19 variant, the CDC and the St. Charles County have recommended universal indoor masking for all students and staff, K through 12, regardless of vaccination status. And this will likely keep us at full-time in-person learning. So, if we're to prevent a repeat of what happened last winter and keep our students in classrooms and off of Zoom calls, we must act according to what science and statistics are showing us. This past school year, even with masks, students and teachers weren't wearing them correctly. Things weren't being cleaned correctly. I saw that, and so many students here saw that on a daily basis. And I know when I walk into school on August 24th, I will likely be in the minority of the student body when I come in wearing a mask in accordance with CDC guidelines. But I'd rather wear a mask all day for the entire year than risk having to go virtual again or anything worse happening to my peers. The best course of action, as evidenced by national and international scientific and public health organizations, is to reinstate the mask mandate. We can all agree that no one likes wearing masks on their face all day. If there's an outbreak amidst these new variants, though, then the worst that happens is that students have to wear a mask for a few more months. But if you make the decision tonight to not make masks mandated again, you risk thousands of adults and kids suffering across the community because of one simple precaution that you could have easily reinstated. You tried ignoring this pandemic once, and it set me and all of the other students up for certain failure. Please stop playing with our education and only listening to the crowd that screams over us. Waiting until the situation is dire is a terrible mitigation strategy, especially when you have the power of prevention in your hands. Your job is to keep us safe, and the decision you make tonight will prove whether you're capable of that or not.
Thank you. Up next is Sean Bruce.
My name is Sean Bruce. I live at 870 Glen Arbor Drive in Lake St. Louis. My name is Sean Bruce, and I'm a senior at Liberty High School. I was one of the students denied my right to speak to my elected representatives at the October Board of Education meeting. We wanted to speak words of caution to you guys the last time you voted to ease up on COVID restrictions against the advice of our national and global health agencies. You did not listen to our words. Last time, we predictably had to stay home for a few months. Here I stand, almost a year later, with the same warning. Please do not repeat your mistake. The CDC has once again recommended that everyone wear masks again because half the nation is unvaccinated, and our case numbers are rising again. You may think that it's safe to lose the masks because you haven't seen any cases over the summer. That is immediately going to change when you cram 1,200 kids back into each high school. And you guys are okay with taking that chance? You guys are okay with half of your high school and middle school and all of your elementary students being susceptible to the Delta variant and all other COVID-related illnesses? You're... I agree that masks are the worst, but we did a year of them. Why can't we do it until it's safe to stop? Your poor decision-making and habit of only listening to parents who have not experienced what we have has taken away my junior year. Don't take away my senior year.
Thank you. Up next is Katie Lysak.
Hello, my name is Katie Lysak. I'm the parent of two students in the Wentzville School District. I was also the legal guardian of a younger sibling who graduated from Holt in 2014. My husband and I have lived in the district for nearly 16 years. Our kiddos are in elementary school, and I can say with all sincerity that we have had great working relationships with each of their teachers and the administration at their school. First, the website you can find what I'm going to speak about is fairforall.org. Click the Chapter tab and choose St. Louis under the state of Missouri. The Great Opt-Out is scheduled for this coming Friday, August 20th. I am speaking tonight to inform parents and caregivers about a useful tool that is intended to bring balance back to the home and school relationship. This tool is an opt-out document. It is not a binding contract, but rather, it is a statement of intent. For this document to be most beneficial, parents should fill out each section that they deem is appropriate for their own family, then email the opt-out document to all educators in their child's sphere of influence at school. This includes all teachers, counselors, school nurse, principal, assistant principal, any applicable special service providers and/or teachers, assistant superintendent, superintendent, and even the Board of Education. Once submitted, stand firm, and follow up. The opt-out document contains six sections designed to allow me, as a parent, or you, as a parent, to have a voice in the types of assignments or classes or testing or surveys that your children are participating in. The document politely but assertively tells educators in our children's lives that we are not just asking for, but requiring an alternative assignment or even class when anything we deem to be in conflict with our own family culture or religion or belief is introduced in the classroom. Sexual education is a prominent example of one of the sections that I, as a parent, have chosen to opt my child out of. There is one aspect to communicate about this document that is very, very important. This document is not intended in any way to be an attack on any person who is an educator in the district or the educational establishment as a whole. The document is meant to rebalance the relationship between parent and school. It is meant to replace the tug-of-war that many feel they have found themselves in. Opting out gives parents a tool to retake their proper place as the first and best educators and decision-makers for their child. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Danita Francis.
Hello, good evening. My name is Danita Francis. We live in Shady Creek. My husband and I are a third grader, a fourth grader, and a kindergartner in this district. COVID-19 has had an impact to varying degrees on everyone. No doubt, the physical aspect of it is a huge concern, and I can empathize with people who may be at high risk or have pre-existing conditions. I have friends and family who are nurses and EMTs, and have seen the effects of COVID firsthand. The majority of my very large family has all had COVID, ranging from kids to my great aunt who is in her 90s. At the same time, I think there has been a majority of emphasis placed on only the physical aspect of COVID, and tonight I want to talk about the mental, emotional, and relational restrictions and effects that mask-wearing is taking on our kids from their point of view. And I hope that after hearing my comments, you will continue to make that optional. Here is what some of them had to say, keeping in mind that the ages of these children are as young as five. They were asked, quote, "How do you feel when wearing a mask?" And the second question was, "How do you feel when you see everyone else wearing masks?" end quote. Their responses, quote, "Nervous, like I'm going to faint bad because I didn't know what to do with my spit. Distracted, frustrated, disgusting inside my mask. I miss seeing people's faces. I hate masks. Mad, annoyed, sad because I can't hear people, and I don't know who I can trust. I can't see their face. Fed up. Just because I'm little doesn't mean grownups at school can just force me to do things with my body. I feel quiet because I feel like I can barely talk to anybody without the mask over face. I feel like I can barely even talk to make friends. I feel suffocated and woozy. I have really intense feelings about masks. Masks make me feel crazy. I feel trapped. I can't breathe, a little dizzy, like I can't get enough oxygen. Sweaty, hot, feel like I want to scream. If I'm trying to make friends, I can only know them halfway with masks. First of all, I can't see their face. Second of all, I can't hear them. Third of all, everybody looks creepy like zombies. Fourth of all, if I barely even halfway know them, it's hard to care what they're trying to say. And that's what hit my heart the most because I feel like kids are kind of losing that aspect of caring in the relational aspect. I end quote. I understand data and statistics. I have a strong appreciation for the sciences. But I am also a mom, and I care about my kid's heart and their emotional health, as I do all of the kids in this community. I care about their relationships and whether or not they're developing the skills they need to be able to read people's expressions to gain informed trust. Trust, which is a basic foundation for relationships. And I'm a former educator, so I also understand how these masks mandates play out in real life, outside of a lab. I am more concerned with the individualistic and collective toll masks-
Your time is up, please conclude.
Just one more thing, please. I'm also more concerned with the individualistic and collective toll masks are taking on kids in the areas of academic loss when they are constantly, as they put in their own words, distracted and-
I'm sorry, your time is up, thank you.
It's one more sentence. Negative emotions associated with swearing because the basis of good and effective learning is the emotional state of the child. Thank you very much.
Next up is Jennifer Olson.
Hello, my name is Jen Olson, and one of my children is a sophomore at Timberland. Today, I would like to address board policy as it pertains to the expected conduct of speakers during public forum. From what I understand, the board is creating or has created policy that requires speakers to display adult role-model behavior when addressing the board during public forum. This is not only subjective expectation, as we all have different definitions of what a role model is, but it also is in direct violation of our First Amendment right. In the 1964 United States Supreme Court landmark case, New York Times v. Sullivan, the court's decision was unanimous, nine to zero. Justice William Brennan Jr. stated in the majority opinion, "This nation is founded on the profound national commitment to the principles that debate on public issues shall be uninhibited, robust, and wide open." He went on to say that it also may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials. In a concurring opinion, Justice Hugo Black wrote, "I doubt that a country can live in freedom where its people can be made to suffer physically or financially for criticizing their government, its actions, or its officials. An unconditional right to say what one pleases about public affairs is what I consider to be the minimum guarantee of the First Amendment." This is constitutional case law in the United States. Our right and our duty to petition the government for a redress of grievances is constitutionally protected and guaranteed. Our rights are not given to us by man; they are given to us by our Creator and protected and insured by our Constitution, not the other way around. We do not need permission to address our public officials, and we certainly don't need restrictions on our free speech in order to do so. Creating board policy to stifle our speech is an assault on our rights. Board policy does not supersede the United States Constitution, not now, not ever. To be clear, I'm not suggesting people come to this podium to berate, humiliate, and denigrate any of you publicly. I am, however, informing you that if someone feels the need to do so, that it's a constitutionally protected right. And any attempt to impede someone's ability to speak freely in the manner in which they choose when addressing public officials would be a direct violation of our civil liberties in the United States Constitution. As public servants, you signed up for this job knowing full well that you'll face criticism at times. It does not have to be pleasant, polite, or relayed to you with an indoor voice. Our constitutionally protected rights supersede the protection of your feelings, emotions, reputations, and egos. With all due respect, I ask the board to go back to the drawing board with their speech restricting board policies or do away with them altogether. Thank you.
Next up is Mike Monroe.
Hello, my name is Dr. Mike Monroe. I'm a chiropractor physician. I have a bachelor's degree in anatomy and over 300 hours in the diagnosis and treatment of internal disorders. I also have three children attending Timberland High School. And I just want to say that the CDC even states that... I'm not an anti-masker, okay? But I believe it should be an individual's choice. It should not be mandated. But the CDC even states that masks do not prevent you getting or transmitting the virus. Also, the CDC also states that children have less than one thousandth of one percent of suffering serious illness, hospitalization, or death from this virus. I also want to say that one of my sons, last year during the school year... And we all well know that masks were required the whole year, every day, full day, without exception. One of my kids came home in February and said, "Dad..." Lifted up his shirt and said, "Dad, look at this rash." And I looked at it, and I'm like, "Oh, my Lord, that's chickenpox." And you know very well that chickenpox is a respiratory droplet, transmitted disease, just like SARS-CoV-2 is. So, if masks worked so well, then how did my kid contract chickenpox wearing a mask all day long? He didn't have any other activities in February. He does band, and he does soccer. They didn't have any band or soccer in February of last year. All he was at is school, and then he came home. In fact, then he comes home, and he has two brothers. And nobody wears a mask in my house. And his brothers somehow didn't get chickenpox. Explain that science. I just... What I want to say is, you know, that masking, it might be able to, you know, reduce some viral load, but that's for the individual where. There's more risks involved with wearing a mask than there are benefits. These risks, we've already heard some. Kids complaining about headaches, about confusion, about lack of focus. All these things are symptoms of hypoxia or hypoxemia, which is lack of oxygen in the blood. It's not a myth. These masks can do and do more harm than good sometimes. Just keep that in mind when you're, you know, when you're thinking about making this a mandate for people. It should be a choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ellie Kleffner.
I just want to let you know before I start, I took a lot of time writing this speech, and I might be a little bit over three minutes. So, if you allow me to finish, like, if I might be a little over three minutes, that'd be great. All right, my name is Ellie Kleffner, and I will be a junior this year at Holt. It has been almost a year since I last spoke up here from the time I was a sophomore. Last year is what I consider the worst year I've ever had since I started high school. From the beginning to the end of last year, it was a very sad and stressful time for me. Most students, on the first day of school, look forward to seeing their- Most students on the first day of school look forward to seeing their friends and starting new classes. The first day of school was nothing like that for me. I should have been looking forward to school with excitement, but instead I felt like crying. Seeing every single person at my school wearing a mask was so heartbreaking. The bus ride home on that day was so dreadful. The weather being at least 90 degrees that day, we were not allowed to roll down any windows or take off our masks. I was so hot and even started to get a migraine. I tried to get through the whole bus ride home without passing out. I started school that year with being in person on Mondays and Tuesdays and then virtual on Thursdays and Fridays. Those virtual classes would either last 20 minutes or an hour. The in-person days for me at school were very lonely for me. And most of my friends were virtual on those days. I did not have many friends at school during those days. And I even found myself sitting alone at lunch on some days. The year just got worse as the days flew by. I was part of student council that year and it was very rare if we were able to plan events for our school because our events would often get canceled at the very last minute because of COVID. One time I was in charge of planning this trivia event for our school. The event went very well, but I ended up getting a 50% for my grade because the reason was I was late for the event and I had to run back home to grab a mask. Fearing that I was not allowed to enter the school without a mask, I also forgot to mention that my grades went down so quickly during the time we were virtual. I used to be an A and B student and I passed my sophomore year with two Ds. In October, I also found myself getting quarantined because I was sitting too close to a kid who had COVID in my geometry class. Those days being forced inside my house felt so lonely for me and my anxiety became worse and I even started feeling depressed. I used to enjoy going to school and now I dread going to school every day now. There was nothing fun to look forward to anymore. No football games, no school dances, nothing. I was also inducted into National Honor Society that year as well. Most students would be looking forward for the induction ceremony, but not, my ceremony was nothing like that. Instead of a live in-person ceremony, I was stuck at home watching the ceremony with no sound on my Chromebook. Lastly, my parents and I were looking into private school in hopes for a better school environment. We took the tour of the school and the woman giving us the tour said she would send my transcripts in case I was interested when I went on CIST. But when I went on CIST to check if my schedule was out for my junior year, I found out that I had been completely disenrolled from Holt. I was so angry that we had to go through the whole process of enrolling me back into Holt. It has been 18 months now and we are still doing this. I can say that I have had so much anxiety and depression just from last year. I am so afraid that I will not be prepared for college because of the education I am receiving. I am looking forward to my junior year, but so scared that this year is going to be the same as last year. I want to see things getting back to normal soon and a positive outlook for myself and so many others. Please let us stay mask optional so that we can smile and breathe again. Thank you.
Up next is Renee Henke.
Good evening. Back in June, I told you all how assaults were out of control in schools. And what did you do? You made policies regarding signs at a board meeting. It seems you're more concerned about your image than you are the safety of staff and students. I would like to remind, I would like to remind the board what the superintendent said. So in the past, pre-pandemic, we were having what we called a safety program update or evaluation. As part of our, as part of our program evaluation cycle, that got thrown off as things were thrown off last year. He also stated, "If we are bending the arc of a student, in my mind, that's a success." These individual successes literally are changing the arc of where a child is going to go and ultimately do is a tremendous benefit for that individual. The assistant superintendent mentioned consequences depend on behavior and stated, "What we have found is that by putting our students out of school for 30, 90, 180 days for these offenses, we're actually having a negative impact, not only on their academics, but also on providing them with appropriate help and assistance they need." The principal at my children's school sent out an email to staff telling them not to tell parents what's going on. I was told by a parent that their child doesn't mind being in class with a violent student because in the aftermath of a violent episode, the whole class gets candy, treats, and special privileges. Is this what bending the arc for one child looks like? Teachers being sent to the hospital and students that witness violent assaults are bribed with special treatments? And the staff are told to keep secrets from parents? I had the, the principal at my kid's school tell me in an email, "They don't document teacher assaults." Did the board know this? Is the board okay with this? Why wouldn't assaults of any kind be documented? Why does DESI show zero violence in our school since 2011? Why are you covering up what's going on? Who stands to gain from these lies? Your own policies and regulations state that these students should have been suspended or even expelled and you all should be fired. So I will ask, are you going to follow policy and regulations this year? Or are you going to put students and staff at risk again of injury to bend the arc for one child? What has to happen to send a violent child to Pierce Hall Education location? Because sending a teacher to the hospital isn't bad enough. Let's think about that.
Thank you. All right, up next is Glenn Becker.
Hello, my name is Glenn Becker. I've been up here for a year and a half educating this board of directors on IT issues related to student data and the leak of student data going out of the Wentzville School District. I'm up here today not to talk to them, but to talk to all the parents out there listening online and watching me. Please do not sign the WSD Responsible Use Policy, and here is why. There is a clause in there that they have added that states, "I agree to release and ademnify the Wentzville School District and all other organizations related to the Wentzville School District's technology resources from any liability or damages that may result from any use of the technology at the school district." You are giving away your rights to sue this school district, to take legal action against this school district for these policies that they don't have in place for the data that's leaking out. I went ahead and emailed this school district and the board of directors specifically this clause, asking them why it was in there. I gave them an example. Would you shop at a grocery store that you know leaked your data or had a data breach if they made you, when you walked in, sign an agreement that says when you use our credit card machines, you can't sue us because we're going to go ahead and give away your data? If the answer is no, you wouldn't shop there, why would you let your kids use this school's technology? So I did email the board directors. I had three of them contact me back within two days. One of them, and I'm going to quote, said, "If you want to change, you have to hit us financially." Hitting us financially means you don't sign that document. You force the school to buy books again or increase our technology security awareness. If we have to buy books and we have to print everything, that means the students have to have their lockers back. That sounds like a great idea. I hate my kids carrying around two book bags every day. The same board of directors' parents said, "If that doesn't work, start doing sick outs. Start fighting the school district by not sending your kids here. If we have a thousand kids miss a day of school, we don't get money." The other school district or board of directors' person contacted me and said, "We'll deal with this behind closed doors." I've asked for this to be on the agenda for a year and a half. I've had the board of directors here tell me they have requested it. And tonight I got an email back saying, "Well, we're going to handle it behind a closed-door session." Thank you. So, parents, I'm asking because they're not listening. Please do not sign that. Turn in your kids' notebooks. And oh, by the way, to get around us, they're going to have your child sign this the first day of school. So please turn in your notebooks like I am. Join me to force this school to do the right thing when it comes to technology and securing our data. They have a list of 10 items that I demonstrated over the last year and a half, and they have not fixed any of them. Thank you very much. You can have your five seconds back.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Danielle Looney.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Looney. I'm in the Bedford Falls subdivision and I have four kids currently in the Wentzville School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again tonight. I'm here to address my concerns about learning loss. I'd like to start by reading a short email from my daughter's third grade teacher last year. "Hello, everyone. I'm just reaching out to sing the praises of your sweet daughter. I apologize I haven't reached out sooner, but since day one, she is consistently hardworking, respectful, and kind to everyone. She is also incredibly eager to challenge herself, learn something new, and is never content to settle for anything than complete academic excellence. She is always engaged in class and listening, even when those around her are talking out of turn or off task. Our classroom is a better place because she's here and I feel grateful to be her teacher." This student left third grade at a mid-third grade level. So if this is the excellence striving and she left at a mid-third grade level, we have an issue that is going to snowball. Due to the circumstances related to COVID, starting in hybrid learning and being quarantined, this excellent, outstanding student left third grade not having been taught full third grade curriculum. The impact of learning loss has affected every student in the district with devastating effects on those students who already struggle during normal school times. Most teachers did their very best, given the circumstances, but had to pause new learning to help kids coming back off quarantine and catch up time after time. So this is going to be a snowball effect and it will get bigger unless we find ways to address this issue now. We lost fourth quarter in 2019, 2020 school year and we lost a ton of instructional time last year. If we do not see better options in instructional learning during quarantines this year, the problem will continue to snowball and cause issues for years to come. Also, since we have the availability of ESAR funds to dedicate to learning loss, it would be of my opinion that the Wentzville School District should develop and make available options for all students, whether that's after-school programs, making tutors available, more parent resources. This needs to be addressed immediately. Getting ahead of this issue instead of waiting for the damage report in a few years and trying to fix it then.
Thank you. All right. Up next is our consent agenda. I don't believe there are I don't believe there are any adjustments, and so we need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'm sorry that your voice cut out. I didn't hear what you had to say. I do have two items on the consent agenda that I would like clarification on.
Okay. If we can get a motion in a second, then we can have some discussion.
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Director Garber.
I would like to ask a question. I'm not sure if I've actually got this in the right sequence or not, but item number 10.6, personal recommendations and resignations. I think that's probably you. And I would like to ask a question. I noticed that we have virtual teachers that we are, that were on this list to be hired. How many virtual teachers do we have at this time?
Okay. We currently have one kindergarten, one first grade, two second grade, one third grade, two fourth grade, two fifth grade. We have a sixth or eighth grade team, so four teachers. And then at high school, we have teachers teaching as needed. So we don't have one teacher dedicated at the high school per class. It's, it's as we need it per class.
So total of how many virtual teachers do we have?
I didn't count that. So we have four at the middle school. We have six, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12?
12 total? Okay. Thank you.
And then the additions here, though, these are for asynchronous courses. So these are extra-duty contracts. Our teachers are teaching these outside of their contracted time. They are asynchronous courses that were developed by, so we use Launch and we use other third-party platforms to help provide access to virtual learning. These in particular are courses that we developed in-house with our own teachers. And so the extra-duty contracts here are for teachers who are teaching those courses.
Okay. Thank you. My next question was on 10.29, the contract for author visit. It looked like it was going to be very fun. I don't remember now, who was it that did that? That's you. Okay. So it looked like it was going to be fun. But I noticed that there was no book title. I don't believe there was a book title. And so I know that I myself am personally very concerned about some of the book titles. And do you, can you tell me, is it just one book or how many books is he going to discuss?
So there's a book title in the actual contract. It's "The End of the World as We Know It." It was nominated for a Truman Award.
Yeah, okay. "The End of the World," okay. Is there any way that we could get a copy of that book at all beforehand? I noticed that there was, obviously, these books are going to be for sale. I mean, they'll be sold by the author when they're here. Correct?
No, the purpose of his visit is to come and to talk with students about being a writer, the writing process. So it will help if they've read the book so that they can kind of engage in that thinking with him. But there's, there's no, there's no selling of books that's happening. The book would be in our libraries and be available to students to check out.
Okay. So it's called "The End of the World as We Know It"?
It's "The End of the World as I Know It."
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. Next up, we have superintendent's report. And up first, I believe we have a presentation related to the 2021-2022 school year return.
We do in fact have that. As Mr. Docket is pulling this up. Multiple cabinet members actually will be speaking during this presentation just to give you an update of what has changed and transpired. And there has been change. Actually, if you look at that second slide, that is different than what we sent you yesterday. So literally as this PowerPoint was updated and uploaded just after 4:00 in the afternoon on yesterday at 4:13, and we have a timestamp that's listed there, there were three more documents of guidance, or guidance documents that were made available, available to us from DESI. So literally, it changed from afternoon to just slightly later in the afternoon on yesterday. So we've been working our way through the guidance documents that have been provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as well. But you can see, these are all of the guidance documents that we have been reviewing, that we've been really drilling down on and looking into so that we can understand quarantine, specifically what that will look like. But we have communicated with our St. Charles County Department of Public Health as it relates to quarantine. As we have expressed, we will be engaging in the, we will be sharing contact information, but we will not be leading the efforts as it relates to quarantine. And we've had direct conversation, communication with St. Charles County's Department of Public Health when it comes to that as well. So these are all of the guidance documents that, that literally have been reviewed in the coming, or the past few weeks, just related to this. We can pull up any of these if you would like to do so. I do want you to know that because of this DESI update on yesterday, there's now going to be an update from St. to be an update from St. Charles County Department of Public Health with their guidance as well. So the document that we shared on Friday evening had a timestamp on it. We are likely to see some changes because we're still awaiting their update, given the recent DESI information that was just shared. If that comes across as confusing, that is not the intent, just trying to provide some transparency of literally the rate of change that we're dealing with and the amount of information in terms of flow that we're also working our way through. The next slide actually is a snapshot of where we stand in terms of spread with COVID-19 here in the Wentzville School District. You can see the county average, and you can see where we stand here in Wentzville as well. It's on the county's webpage. I believe that's correct, still on the county's webpage. And so just for the sake of transparency and clarity, just sharing that information so the board is level set in terms of what that means. This is a bit of a lagging indicator. This data is actually 10 or so days, seven to 10 days old, and so it's a bit of a lagging indicator, but gives you an idea of, you can see the activity. You can see why we were, where we were in June, and things have ramped up since the month of July, and you can see where we're standing in August. So this was approved. This was presented and approved at the July 13 Board of Education meeting. These are the mitigation and prevention strategies. My apologies for the eye strain for our audience. This information is unchanged. It was on our district website. It still exists on our district website. There is one call out that I want to make very, very clear, and it relates to the expectation when it comes to transportation, specifically busing and mask wearing. Very much a hot-button issue. We fully understand that. But it is very clear in terms of federal expectation when it comes to folks that are riding, students that are riding, our buses, and quite honestly, staff that are on buses as well, that people, when it comes to buses themselves, other forms of public transportation, the expectation is that there will be mask wearing that is adhered to while on the bus themselves. You've seen these updates in the past as it relates to masking. We've had this conversation, right? We had this conversation back in June. We revisited in July. And then physical distancing and the other criteria that are listed as well. Hand washing and cleaning... And hand washing, would you scroll back down? Just want to touch on that. And respiratory etiquette as well is also discussed and delineated. Again, what we know about the pandemic is different than what we knew in the past, right? If communication information continues to evolve, we will still have the hand washing stations. We will still have the hand sanitizers within the classroom spaces and learning spaces so that students have access to that. I'll stand by what I've said in the past. That is a good practice regardless of pandemic or not, that students are in fact washing hands, but we will still have those particular pieces in place. Cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities. We will have access to the spray bottles and the rags, but we've learned something different about the life shelf, so to speak, of the particulates themselves and what it means in terms of cleaning desks. We're in a different space and time. If we have individuals, whether it be teachers, other instructional staff, or students that want their particular station cleaned, we will in fact allow for that to happen, but we won't build that into our secondary schedules. Our nurses' stations, our nurse stations themselves, we will be engaged in daily deep cleaning of those nurse stations because that is appropriate throughout the course of the pandemic. So we will still continue those particular mitigative steps. Diagnostic and screening testing, we've had conversation about this as well, and I also shared with staff today via video, there are ample opportunities throughout our community when it comes to testing. If we are encountering a scenario or a situation where we feel as though we need to ramp up our efforts within district, we will be able to turn that around relatively quickly, but there are ample opportunities available in multiple spots throughout our community. So we will not necessarily dedicate staff and resource at this particular point in time, but as, and if needed, we will do so. Vaccination efforts, I think we all understand where adults sit at this particular point in time. Students that are ages 12 and up have access to the vaccine. We know those that are younger do not at this particular point in time. We'll continue to publish information about vaccine opportunities for our community if and when it's appropriate, but that's where we stand as it relates to vaccination efforts. And of course, we will be making accommodations for students with disabilities as well. Any comments cabinet that I've left out when it comes to the mitigation and prevention strategies? So contact tracing. We have had direct conversation with St. Charles County Department of Public Health, specifically their leadership in terms of what our role will look like this year when it comes to contact tracing. Dr. Lebrat, you want to take point on this and just provide an update of where that stands?
Good evening. Good evening. We know that there was a desire to return to the assist role in contact tracing as the governor's orders for schools to help lead that effort rolled off on June 30. MoDESI and DHSS have provided some additional updated guidance on that, but in addition, we've outlined some options that could be possible in our ability to assist in that rather than to lead that effort. In doing that, we would identify and take any information on a positive individual, any information that was provided to us, as well as that student's date of birth, contact information, and then provide that to the county health team. In addition to that, we would keep rosters of that student's classes with names of those students, their date of birth, and their parent contact information, as well as seating charts with predetermined measurements, or pre-measured annotations of those measurements on those seating charts, so that would be quickly and easily accessible to county health. We would then quickly turn that around to county health as soon as we knew the positives information, and we are going to keep those rosters and those seating charts on file so they are ready to go expeditiously, turn those right into county health for them to make some of those quarantining decisions. They would then make those decisions and contact those families as soon as we provided that information to county health, and we think that would be just about an immediate turnaround. We would also send an exposure letter to families of the student, the positive students' classes. So that would be another step we would take as well, and that would be reverting back to more of the assisting county health method. Just so that you are aware, we have discussed this with county health. They were grateful for the opportunity for us to be able to assist in this manner and to try and speed up that process as much as possible and provide that information. With some of the provisions that were given with masking, that we'll talk about it a little bit, I do foresee some difficulties in getting the quarantine status of students who work close contacts back quickly, dependent on the workforce of county health and their turnaround time, and also the ability to know whether students are masked or not. So I think you saw what we were able to do as we led with county health last year. This is a pared-back version on if we were in an assist-only mode. I also think that we would be able to provide something in between if you felt that that was the best fit and the will of the board. So just wanted to kind of show you the outline as discussed with county health most recently. Are there any questions in regard to contact tracing?
Yes. Would we be doing any, are you suggesting that we would be doing any testing here? Would we be doing any testing, COVID testing, or?
We had a staff testing clinic available last year. That was a staff clinic only. We do not have that up and running this year since testing is so prevalent in our community. If we were to get into a situation where testing is no longer prevalent or the turnaround times are lagging, we would have the ability to get that back up and running, but we are not testing students.
Would there be any possibility, if we did have a student at school that was ill, would there be any possibility that child would be sent to the Mercy Medical Center where we're on peers?
We could recommend that to the parent as an option. They would get priority status in being seen and could walk in immediately, but that is not something that we would do as a building.
Our next section here is our guide to quarantine. And again, I want to just reiterate that this DESI update is requiring us to come back and revisit this again as it relates to the guide to quarantine itself. So, Dr. Lebrat, any highlights here?
As Dr. Kane mentioned, this was created, this was created over the course of a couple of weeks as the guidance was coming in and put into the report last night. And as soon as we hit submit on the report, we did receive new guidance from DHSS and MoDESI in conjunction. That guidance is a little bit different than what we had received from St. Charles County Department of Public Health. So I do want you to know that the document that you're seeing live tonight was created prior to being given that new information from DHSS. We did receive word from St. Charles County Public Health today that they are taking in the new guidance from DESI and DHSS. They are interpreting it, and they will be giving their own feedback accordingly. We have spent today looking at that guidance that was released last night and making a second document that would be an adjustment according to the guidance that's been provided by DHSS, if in fact that does stand in St. Charles County as well. So we are prepared to act in either way. And to educate the community as well and provide those documents so that parents and students understand.
Just really quick, for the community, can you just quickly explain the delta between what DESI has now said versus where the county's at? My understanding is it's basically the state has now come out and said modified quarantine is back.
That's correct.
And the county is evaluating that. Okay.
Correct. I had had personal conversations with the acting director of public health and had inquired about any changes or any similarities to the tracing plans from last year. Late last week, just trying to get updates as soon as we can that were hot off the press as well. At that point in time, modified quarantine had fallen off, and there was something new called the close contact exception. So we created our documents to exclude modified quarantine since that was no longer a thing and to include the close contact exception. The documents that you'll see posted right now are indicative of that. Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services in conjunction with DESI has now, since yesterday at 4:15 PM, reinstituted the idea of modified quarantine. And so those, that information will be added to this document. We actually have a draft right now going just for the understanding of the public. A close contact exemption would be if you have two students who are three to six feet apart, and they're both masked. So you have two students, three to six feet apart, both masked. This is brand-new information. Both masked, mask fits well, it's worn well with consistency for the duration of the exposure, three to six feet apart. Those students would not have to quarantine at all inside or outside of the school day. So that is brand-new guidance. Provides lots of opportunities for students if they are appropriately masked for that duration. In addition, like I said, so that was three to six feet. They also brought back if St. Charles County chooses to adopt it, the zero to three was the MoDESI recommendation. If two students are zero to three feet apart, zero to two feet, 11 inches apart, and they are both masked with fidelity for the full duration and appropriately masked, those students would be eligible for a modified quarantine. Those students would be able to attend school only and would have to return home at the end of the school day. Per the county, they would not be permitted to partake in any other activities, after-school activities, things like that. It would be bus and academic school day only. Additionally, if any of these students in these situations were to become symptomatic, whether students are vaccinated or they've had COVID in the last 90 days, or they were one of these modifications or exceptions. Thank you. If one of these students was to become symptomatic, they would then revert to quarantine during that time if they had been exposed. And as soon as we do hear from St. Charles County Department of Public Health, we will be providing those updates.
Can you speak, can you speak quickly to how this relates to staff? So we have the close contact student, but is there any variation, or is it consistent with the student information?
As of yesterday, it was student to student only. Some of the guidance that has been provided since yesterday evening has started using teacher and staff verbiage as well, so we will need clarification from St. Charles County on that.
So it seems, assuming that the county adopts DESI's current recommendation, the quarantine guidelines would be very much the same as last year. Is there an exception to that statement?
They would be very similar with more ability for students to participate in activities as well if they are three to six feet away and masked. And again, these exposures have to occur during the school day as well.
Okay.
So if I have a question, please?
Yeah, sure.
Can you tell me exactly how many of are the staff and teachers and everyone that's employed by the district? Can you, do you have a number of how many people have been vaccinated?
Director Garber, the district does not collect vaccination status of the employees or of the students in regard to the COVID vaccine, so we do not have that information. I, if, and there are call-outs there for people who are vaccinated that they would not have to quarantine, that would be something that we produce to county health.
So that to the extent they're vaccinated, they would provide that vaccination status to county health upon receiving a quarantine letter?
And county health would provide us an updated listing of students who are on quarantine and their expected return date.
Guys, this is a business meeting, so I'll ask that you please be respectful and allow us to have our meeting.
President Bates, if I could, please?
Yes, Secretary Shaper.
Question for Dr. Lebrant. How, if the quarantine is, last year there was some question as to fulfillment on the education side, why would quarantine these students? What's going to be our practice for this year for a quarantine student?
I can let Dr. Skeeters speak more directly to the practice for a quarantine student and what the education aspect would look like. So I'll turn it over to her.
That's our next slide. Actually, we're going to be pushing out information, I believe, this Friday with e-news about some of those expectations, Secretary Shaper, with some of those expectations in terms of if a student is confronted with an extended absence. So that information will be going out. We're also, I'm not going to steal your thunder, so I'll stop talking at this point in time. So there are two points, right? Guidance for WSD educators, and then of course, information for parents as well. Dr. Skeeters?
Right. So there are two documents linked on this slideshow. The first one is guidance for our educators. This has been shared with all administrators last week during administrator meetings. We reviewed it thoroughly, as well as the document for parents and guardians. This just provides teachers with information, guidance for working with students to provide instruction, how to address assignments or assessments, also how to give grading and feedback. So this is what would happen. These are the options that we have in place for teachers to use when a student has an extended absence, like a quarantine. So you'll see there that we have a variety of things like pre-recorded lessons, recording your lessons to post on your learning management system, to using other video recordings that you find, and also being able to schedule time to allow students to connect via Google Meet. The other document is a document that will go home with students or to parents in the event that a student is quarantined or experiencing extended absence, just to remind them of what they can expect. So you'll notice if we have a student who is ill, we would not obviously expect that they would be engaging in the learning that is being posted on the learning management system for them, nor will we expect them to complete the work. But if a student is not ill, we hope that they will be able to keep connected to the class by logging into that device, into their learning management system, and engaging with the content that the teacher has provided.
Dr. Skeeters, if I may. Just a quick question. So how are those two, so I read those, how are those two documents different or similar to last year?
They are the same as last year with the exception of we have gone one-to-one at our elementary, so there is a provision in there for devices that will be checked out for every elementary student if they have to be on an extended absence.
So, Dr. Kane, I know we talked about this last Friday, just you and I, but as it relates to quarantine learning, this is a huge challenge. And assuming we continue forward with the mitigation strategies and have out, there is a risk of quarantine. That being said... That being said, you know, making very clear the expectation by teacher to students, to parents, of what is expected of each individual in that triangle during an extended absence, I think is incredibly important. Call it a contract between the three parties, an understanding, a mutual agreement. I recognize dictating from a top-down perspective of the district is challenging, given the level, you know, you could be considering, the type of class it is, et cetera. However, setting clear expectations, maybe it's when I'll be available for questions, when I expect you to log on, what I expect you to complete and when, I think will be incredibly helpful moving forward.
We agree with you and we are asking teachers to communicate clearly their plan for quarantine in particular, or any extended absence with parents upfront, so that they know what the expectation will be.
President Bates, if I could, please?
Never mind, go ahead.
Dr. Skeeters, what are we going to do for early identification if a student has a deficiency in a class? That was the second thing. Last year, we had some of our students fall behind and their grade level slipped. How's our early identification going to be so we address the deficiencies?
At the beginning of each school year, we make use of a variety of assessments to determine where students are in their reading level and in math. So we'll be using those assessments again this year to see where our students are. We'll use that data then to guide our instruction and make decisions about how we proceed with our curriculum.
Director Robert, do you have something?
So, I'm going to ask a question that we haven't been talking about at all. And that is that what is going on at our southern border, which is allowing people, actually, I think we're set to top off around two million into the United States, and they are being sent all over the country. Heard an interesting statistic about Arizona, and for many of us who remember what was going on in 2007, hospitals were closing out there, they were overrun, and eighty percent of the patients today, today, in Arizona, are the illegal immigrants that are coming into our country. I'm sure we are seeing them, I know I am, and I am concerned about, here we are, we're concerned about COVID. But in many of the originating countries where people have come from, they don't do vaccinations like the United States. Are you preparing, I know that we talked about additional nurses, that was also in the packet in our consent agenda? So we're asking for some additional nurses at this point in time. Are you preparing for that? Because if you're not, you need to be. Because this was a situation that we did have. And it's going to be a lot worse. So I think that we need to be thinking about this ahead of time, not making decisions based out of a panic mode. What have you, what have you thought about with this so far?
Director Garber, thank you. In regard to staffing of nurses and HSAs, we added three HSAs last year in our staffing due to growth and need, and just the general need to add three health service assistants. So we did do that last year. We are excited because that provides a one-to-one ratio of health service aides at our high schools, which we so greatly need, and a two-to-one ratio in our elementaries. And sometimes those buildings of high need because we have students with extenuating medical circumstances, we have a full-time HSA there. We base our nurse staffing off of student need, and if, we have a base formula that we use, and if we have students who are identified in our buildings of having medical needs or who have diagnosed with medical needs, we address those needing, as needs accordingly on a case-by-case basis.
So that's not a matter of if we have this situation, we will. So my question is, aside from what we've been looking at for the last year and a half, which is COVID, we're going to be subjected to some other issues, some other medical issues. We're already hearing that tuberculosis, and I don't think it discriminates to your age. So there are lots of other things. So I just want to make sure that you were all totally aware that this is coming down the pike. And I hope it's not here at all, but we don't need to be doing things at the last minute.
President Bates, if I may? Yes, Director Stoli?
I have a question for Dr. Skeeters. Dr. Skeeters, Director Goodson had talked about a contract student or teachers would be making with their students, laying out expectations. When can parents and students expect to receive this communication?
So this information's going to go out to our community on Friday in the district E-News. So this information that's linked here will go out then. The teacher will be making, will be communicating with, with students and parents as school is starting. And then I would assume, and I would hope, that they would also be communicating again as, as students have to be out for an extended absence.
And I guess, is there an assessment plan as teachers communicate their expectations to students as it relates to learning and quarantine? Is the building principal going to be periodically reviewing these contracts per se, to see if they're effective?
So we're, we're not going to have an actual contract. What we're going to, what we're going to, what we expect is that teachers will communicate with families how they will provide access to the learning in the event of an extended absence. Because we are making use of learning management systems, all of our administrators have access to see what is going on, what's being shared, what's being posted. So at any point in time, they can log on and take a look.
So this going-forward slide has changed. I mean, I want to read what you, what you see listed on this particular slide. There's significance behind it. I don't take the words lightly. It's not a question of popularity, but I do want to talk about some prioritization and why you see what you see listed. Can't ignore the data in terms of what's on the St. Charles County Department of Public Health's website. There's some issues with spread in county. We have to embrace that fact. This first or second bullet is our primary goal, is to keep kids and staff in person, together, and in school. That is absolutely our goal. The challenge is the notion of masking. And especially now that we know there is a modified quarantine, or if the name changes or tweaks, there is some option that keeps kids in school, even if there is exposure if students are wearing masks. I'm not going to speak for the board. I think I know the lean and the will of the Board of Education, but I will say this, masking best supports our ability to keep kids in school, at least for now. At, at least, at least for now.
I'd like to call point of order, please.
At least, at least for now.
Hold on a second, hold on. Director Abbott, did you have something to say?
I'd like to call point of order.
If we're, if you're unable to refrain from shouting out, unfortunately, we'll have to ask you to leave. So we'd love to have you stay.
At least for a number of days to get these numbers back down as relates to our, where we stand with our spread right now. It, it would be the most effective strategy.
Can I please ask that you have no outbursts? Right now, the motion to move or change is in the board's hands. Dr. Kane is asking the board or giving a recommendation. Let the board then discuss and move forward. That's it. Okay, I understand what you may say next, I respect that. Please let us do our jobs and talk as a body about what we should or should not do going forward. Please, all people in the crowd, please do that. We don't want somebody to leave. We want you to hear what we have to say and what we decide. Thank you.
Limiting what's happening with quarantining and contact tracing, allowing us to keep as many kids in class as possible. I am not saying for the entirety of this semester, that's not the authority that any of us have, right? But we can't argue with what that impact is ultimately going to mean. I understand there are folks that feel very strongly, trust me, we have read the email as relates to masking. But if we're in a situation where we're facing quarantine, it is not the same as being in that classroom. Regardless of the contract, regardless of the frame of what we have, it's not the same. We're fighting with some incongruence at this particular point in time. And this has been a series of ebbs and flows and, and considerations that we've had to make this year. I want to see us get past it, but we're just facing a reality that looks different right now. I will say this to this Board of Education, regardless of what this board does, we will get behind whatever direction you provide and we will move forward. But I feel a duty to share what I'm sharing at this particular point in time. We will continue to monitor conditions throughout this district and may require the need for changes at any given time. We've had to do this with the pandemic. I want that stability that our students are asking for, and I hear what our parents are asking for. We hear you. This pandemic sometimes doesn't care what I think, it doesn't care what the board thinks, it's simply reacting and it's causing us to have to react differently. The Wentzville School District is willing to put any mitigating or prevention measure in place. And you can see the St. Charles County Quick Reference Guide for schools, for whatever that may mean. Let me say this, we're excited to be in a position where we can bring back clubs, we can bring back activities, we can bring back tutoring. We never let go of sports last year. We're trying to do the best that we can with what's in front of us. But board, I'll be very frank with you, what I don't want is a situation where in less than thirty days, we're forced to sit here and have another series of uncomfortable conversations because we've got issues across the district. Again, I think I know where the board, I think I know what you are thinking, and you have that right, and I stand by what I said. Whatever this board decides in terms of direction, we will not be sandbagging, we will be moving forward with that direction, but we need to hear both sides of this conversation. You all decide to have whatever it is in terms of dialogue that you want at this point in time, and we'll move forward. With that, that's the last slide.
President Bates, if I could?
Yes, Secretary Shaper?
I got a question. When did this slide here come forward? We, we do not have that in our packet.
It was emailed this afternoon.
Can we make that part of the board packet?
We can make that slot, we can make this a part of the board packet. We can do that. There's a change to slide two. Again, there are three packets of information that were emailed to, I'm sorry, three pieces of information that were emailed to you. Two were packages, one was a, were packets, one was a flow chart that were emailed to you, and then this as well.
Can we just have the most recent packet, all of it updated into our?
We can do that.
Stay out, okay. Into our agenda. All right, other discussion or questions?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. So, COVID sucks. For, for me, my, my family, my impacts, my parents who are in the front row here, they had it in January, were really sick. My sister-in-law, she lost her father and her grandmother four days apart to COVID in Louisiana, in a place that she couldn't get. My grandfather lost his wife, my step-grandmother, to COVID and had to not get comfort from anyone because he was in a nursing home and no one can visit. I've watched my family, children that are close to my kids, suffer significantly from mental health, have stories that are just heartbreaking, much like I'm describing my family's situation. There's no question that our COVID mitigation strategies as we sit here and talk is having an impact in our district and our country. It's made the social, emotional, and mental well-being of our students incredibly challenged. It's made teaching and learning incredibly challenged. We hear that from our speakers, we see that in our community. In my view, this body makes decisions around COVID mitigation strategies, not just for COVID safety. We make decisions on COVID mitigation strategies that also consider learning, that consider the social and emotional and mental well-being of our students. What I find is unfortunate is that COVID data is so easily found. It is in our face all the time, in dashboards and graphs and in tickers and everywhere. What I find unfortunate, while it may be problematic to pull or hard to do, I don't have in the same breath data that shows the amount of suicides, the amount of attempted suicides, the amount of antidepressants, anti-anxiety medication that's being delivered to children, that is having to do and cope with mitigation strategies. So I have my own anecdotal views of that, but I don't have data to make that decision. And I think frankly, this board has both of those things to consider. It is not immaterial what we're doing socially, emotionally, and mentally with our students through COVID mitigation strategies. Maybe it's the stigma of mental health, maybe that's what it is. You know, I, I think we're clearly divided on this issue of masks as a community. I think our survey from the NDA members shows they're divided on the topic. I think that's because they think of safety for COVID, but they also think of how difficult it is to teach in a mask, how difficult it is for young learners and readers to learn to read while teachers are in a mask, how sad it is when a student just needs a smile from their teacher. Those are things we should be considering and have to consider as a board. It is proven in the last fifteen months, those things have challenged us altogether. That being said, I believe that's why we can consider something other than what is being told by us to do. I believe optional masking is appropriate. I believe, I, I fully recognize that going with that strategy is going to have an impact, that quarantines as clearly laid out incentivizes mask-wearing. That being said, this body is elected, has to consider both of those things. And what I find unfortunate is that we're told about safety for COVID, but not how to deal with these other things. And again, maybe it's back to the stigma of mental health, maybe that's what it is. What I'd like to see is us move away from what we're being told in, in terms of quarantine and create our own. I'd like this district to look at what, what we can do differently, differently than what is currently being told to us to do. Whether that's, for example, regardless of mask status, if you are found in close contact, come to school the next day but have to wear a mask. Wear that mask until the incubation period is over or until a negative test. That would keep all kids in school and would also prevent spread to the extent that that individual is positive. I believe there's a way to talk through, whether it's with the Health Department, county councils, et cetera. They're, they're clearly wanting to throw mud at school boards, so why can't we work together to figure out how to solution this for all reasons this body should consider? Thank you.
And I just remind the board, there's not a request for a motion to be made. I mean, the, Dr. Kane laid out, you know, the plan as it appears today, so unless we're looking to do something different, there's, there's no action required on this presentation.
President Bates, if I may? I understand that the modified quarantine is going to potentially make school more sustainable for the school year. However, we had closures with modified quarantine last school year. In addition, I, I guess, I will be asking the Health Department, yes, there has been an uptick in the Delta variant, starting, I think, the first or second week of July. These, these quarantine policies did not come out until, literally, they're hot off the press, for schools only. People were at pools, people were at rock and jumps. So we can have a mask mandate in the Wentzville School District. We are going to have very little control of the spread in the schools. That is a fact. We, in the broader community, we can't control that. And as Director Goodson said about mental and social health, it is very confusing to children when they go to school and they have it is very confusing to children when they go to school and they have mandates and restrictions. And in the broader community, those are not there. So I also support masking as optional for those reasons.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Director Abbott.
Having been on the board for the past year, I'm really struggling with the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, Mo Dussey, Mo DHSS, and the St. Charles County Public Health Department, all having the same basic recommendations, and we're not following any of it. We followed St. Charles County because we were told to follow our local health department's guidance, and that's not what we're doing. And I'd like to ask the board why. I don't understand why.
Director Abbott, I'm happy to answer, or at least try my best to answer. I think the reason to why is exactly my previous statements. These policies are not anywhere in our broader community, yet arguably, I don't know what the vaccination rates are in the Wentzville School District, the Health Department may. But there has been, school has been the safest place. The CDC and our local health authority has said that when this pandemic began. And we haven't been consistent as a board, the previous board, I guess I should say, as it relates to guidance from our local health authority. Last year, the local health authority, or the St. Charles County Department of Health, said that we could go to school five days, two days, or go all virtual. And we made a decision based upon absolutely no directive from the Health Department or recommendation as far as it relates to cases.
The recommendation this time that they've provided is extremely clear compared to the one that we received last year.
You are correct. It is a recommendation. And we are the governing body, and I guess I would just publicly ask the Health Department, they absolutely have authority over this governing body. And if they feel that there is a true threat in public schools as it relates to COVID, they can do a county mandate if they'd like on masking and/or vaccinations.
I do agree with you about talking to county health, and I'm open to having conversations with county health. I think if we're going to do that, it needs to be all of us, and that needs to be everyone participating. I still struggle with not following the recommendations of medical and educational entities that we look to for guidance for this in any other situation. And we are not medical doctors, we do not have medical degrees, and I do not feel comfortable moving forward for my, for me, as a board member, with no prevention and mitigation strategies that are being put forth by our local health department.
I would agree with you. We are not medical doctors. And that is why the Health Department has the authority over us to make those decisions, and I defer back to them. And I just think that's the best case. I don't make medical decisions for children in the school district personally, or as a member of a board or a board as a whole in any way, shape, or form in any other manner. And I think it's inappropriate to do so with this particular case. I think that is our Health Department's responsibility.
Dr. Kane, did you want to add something?
I would like to say that it's the Health Department's responsibility to provide recommendations. No, they have not provided a mandate on anything, but they have provided several recommendations that are very clear. Just need to say that.
I just wanted to add, in our conversations over the summer, we actually asked if there could be the opportunity, if someone were wearing a mask, regardless where to break out in a classroom or a setting, that individual by having the mask would in fact have some degree of modified quarantine. That has been the ask for weeks, if not months, from leadership in this district. Again, just yesterday afternoon, we're finding out about this modified. But please note, that's from masked student to masked student as relates to that. I don't want people thinking that this has been taken lightly, right? We've been asking for this in multiple settings, trying to provide as many options and as much latitude to fit the requests and the needs, the desires of individuals, coupled with just the sheer volume of what we've got going on in the district. Ultimately, this form of modified is what they have re-upped and are moving forward with, but it was not what we asked for some time ago.
I would just like to make a comment. Last year, when we were presented with the COVID virus, we heard one thing, and then we heard something else. And then it was extremely confusing. There wasn't anybody at the highest government level that was actually sending us a solid message that we could count on. This was not something that everybody knew about. And I, I mean, I myself am having totally different feelings all about this COVID issue from a lot of the information that has been coming out from reliable, you know, television channels about things that we are learning, about motives, about all kinds of things relative to this virus. And it doesn't make it any easier when you think that you're doing something adequate and then you find out. I mean, there's a school right out here in Wright City, they did not mask, they did not social distance. They had no children that had COVID, none. So I myself, I myself, I would wear a mask to the store, take the precautions that I felt like I could. But I know that every adult in this room, every adult, you all had some side effect of being isolated from your family. I had a baby, a grandbaby that was born, didn't even get to see that baby. All kinds of other things, and we have all paid the price. But the people that have paid the price the most has been our children. We know. I mean, this is all, this is out there. The news is out there. Our children are actually four to six months behind. And you've heard some of the students that appear today. They want to have a school year, for God's sake. And yet, what happened last year? Let's see, it came out in March, and when we normally would have been having in the school year, we would have been having, you know, homecomings and things like that, all of that came to an end. But you know what? Life didn't come to an end. And yet, we kowtowed to this without really that positive of information. And I think that the price that the United States has paid, all of the children, all of the parents, I just think it's been, I think it's been very devastating. Thank you.
I agree with you, Director Garber, about the confusion with all the different information that is sent out, especially with even today, the information we received today. I just, again, am struggling with not following any medical recommendations that are being put forth.
You know, when you have children, when you had children, you were told that they needed their baby formula, they needed fruits and vegetables. Well, you know, people have to be responsible and take care of themselves physically. And that's, thank you. I know myself, I mean, it's very sad. I'll share this experience. I met someone at a funeral, quite truthfully. The person had COVID in December, and asked myself and my friend I was with, are you vaccinated? And I said, I know he is, but I'm not. And, oh, you really need to go and get that. I got my first shot, and you know, I did really good. But I took that second shot, which would have been in March. He's been sick ever since. And I'm like, and you want me to go and get a shot? I already know what my, I already know what will happen because I have had an experience earlier that I'm not supposed to get the shot. So again, like I said, there's so much that comes out and so much that hasn't come out. And we couldn't even get, we couldn't even get accurate tests from the COVID tests. We couldn't even get those. How many people did you hear about, you know, that had five tests in a day and three of them came back positive, or two? I mean, they were not reliable. They were not reliable. And I think that our children and our entire nation has paid a very dear price. I don't want to pay that price anymore. I'm done with that.
Any further discussion before we move on?
I just have one quick question. Dr. Skeeters, we heard from Glenn on the podium here about the respectable use policy in that call. There was emails specifically about that. As it relates to quarantine learning and the devices and that policy, are there things that we need to shore up? I think I sent a note maybe a day or so ago, and just trying to understand the impacts of that call, how we think about quarantine learning if that's the case.
So the respectable use policy, respectable use policy, it's really geared toward the use of the devices. And so that information that's in there that was called out specifically is not addressing privacy or Kappa, which we follow. It's addressing a student's use of the technology device. So if a student were to take the device and use it in a way that is irresponsible or in a way that, a manner that is, that's not okay, like to provide, you know, to bully another student, to attempt to hack into some program, that is, that's what that is actually referring to. We have a list of all of the websites and things that we use, the resources we use that are Kappa compliant. We expect our teachers to comply with that. And if they find something new, then they have to run it through the Technology Department. It has to be, has to meet the requirements of Kappa. All of our learning management systems do that, so we feel pretty confident.
I have a question for you, ma'am. And that is that why is this then directed to the children who are not legally responsible for anything because they are not of legal age? This should be directed to the parents, not to the child.
That document is part of the paperwork that parents have to complete annually for students to return to school. It is not directed for the student to complete. It is an agreement that the parent enters into, indicating that the student understands that this applies to them.
It seems like I read something about that that was shared with us through email. And basically, what it said, what I read on there was that if your child responded to this in a positive, like, oh, yes, we're going to do that, and then they don't, then the parent is responsible for that. And that's what it said. That's the way I interpreted it. So I am saying to you, then why are you sending it to the children? Why not make sure you send it to the parent? And then the parents are responsible for what their children are looking at and downloading. That is the responsibility of parents.
Just want to make sure we're staying on topic of the return to school year. So I guess I'll ask, is there any more discussion or comment as it relates to the presentation that we had here?
Excuse me, that is part of the return, President Bates, because if in fact that we have people that are not sending back and they're not doing that, then the kids are going to have to turn in their Chromebooks. Isn't that what you said? Isn't that what was, what was, what it was said? I saw that. I read that. And so if they don't do that, then how are you going to do virtual education through that? Or would they, they could use their own, of course, I guess. I'm assuming that they could.
The responsible.
I know that there were not enough Chromebooks. I know, actually, I believe that Director Stoli actually bought her children the books because we didn't have them. So again, I'm kind of miffed. How are you going to do virtual? If the parents, I mean, if they haven't signed that document, then they turn back in their Chromebooks.
The RUP does not require students to turn it in their Chromebooks. The RUP does not allow students, if it's not signed, they will not have access to our wireless, to our network. So they won't have access to our, if they're old enough to Gmail, to our Google resources. So they won't have access. That is correct. Because they have to agree that they are going to behave in a responsible manner.
So essentially, if you don't return this because you don't agree with it, then they don't have access. So what difference does it make if they turn their book, their Chromebook back in? Doesn't matter, does it? They don't have a Chromebook. They don't have access. That's what you just said. They don't have access if they don't sign that. And why would anybody want to sign it? I looked at it myself. I wouldn't sign it myself.
All right, final comments? Oh, did you have something, Director Schaber?
President Bates, if I could, please. And I'll try not to be redundant here, but through this is what I see. The public education system has been challenged very dearly. And we're educators, and I think we have to look at that first. We will not know what this year caused us in education, probably two or two or five years down the road. I just think it's very important that we realize first, we're educators. No matter where we're at or what position, we must have student achievement. As far as where we are with the Health Department, I think the Health Department, the emergency management put something out that we're masked. I think we're caught in the middle on this. They will not mandate it. They will not make a directive. But they're looking at the school district. And yes, I do have concerns for the health of our students. But also, first and foremost, we must give them an education.
All right, final comments? Did you have something?
As I said, when I started talking with that last slide, we have direction. We will move forward. We have direction, and we will move forward. That's all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. All right, next up, our Communications and Community Relations Program Evaluation.
Mr. Derek Docket will be providing a Communications and Community Relations Program update.
The clicker appears to not be working, so I'll give the presentation from my seat if that's okay. The clicker is not working, so I'll give a presentation from my seat if that's okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for the time. I'm pleased to present a program review of our Communications and Community Relations Department. Of course, we consist of five positions within the department. Not only do we manage the communications and community relations for the district, but we also provide support for all the other district buildings as well. We also do, of course, manage mass communication efforts for the district and support for all buildings in addition to support for website, social media, photography, and other communication needs. Some of our specific measurables, you can see on the screen, include our press releases, news stories, social media engagement, district communications outreach efforts, and the most recent communications survey that was distributed this summer. I will be touching on these five bullet points throughout the presentation. First up with the press releases, during the 2021-22, or excuse me, 2020-21 school year, the district was featured in several news stories within the local media. Nineteen of those were individually specific focused on the WSD. Within those news stories, many of those were very positive in nature, and of course, many of those focused on the COVID-19 pandemic. Several of those stories included the opening of North Point High School, a middle school student helping to save a life, and students at Liberty High School creating online broadcast of school-sponsored sporting events. Additionally, our department distributed 78 press releases of positive district news last year to various media outlets. In terms of social media, the district continues to utilize Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and YouTube. The district Facebook- The district Facebook page currently has 19,942 Facebook likes, as I checked this morning. We've had a very steady growth. For comparison's sake, the Francis House School District has more than 17,000, while the Fort Zumaunt School District has 12,000. Some of our most recent popular Facebook posts include snow day announcements during the week of February 9. We had more than 50,000 visual impressions. The post about the Wentzville Middle School student helping to save a life virtually was very popular, and also a post recognizing a staff member who was honored with his induction into the Missouri Wrestling Association Hall of Fame. Our Twitter account currently has more than 11,000 followers. Once again, for comparison's sake, Fort Zumaunt has 12,000 followers, and the Francis House School District has approximately 10,000. In the month of February alone, the district account added more than 400 followers and generated 480,000 impressions, once again, due to snow day announcements. With Instagram, the account has seen very steady growth and is our most popular with students. We are approaching 5,000 followers, as you can see on your screen. Due to the platform structure, though, our reach is actually estimated at more than 6,000 followers. And finally, the district YouTube channel has grown over the last year to more than 3,000 subscribers. The thank you message that the Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Curtis Kane provided to the community was one of the most popular videos on the YouTube channel, in addition to our board meeting live streams. For district communication, the district continues to utilize Blackboard as our mass communication system. We push out information to staff, parents, and stakeholders. Blackboard does continue to allow us to send emails, text messages, phone calls, and push notifications to the users of our mobile app. Our department sends out the district e-news to all staff, parents, and stakeholders approximately twice a month, and the staff e-news to all staff also twice a month, utilizing the Blackboard system. And following each Board of Education meeting, the board report is distributed to all parents, staff, and stakeholders. The district e-news, staff board report, staff e-news, and board report are all also archived on the district website. Within the department, we also maintain several positive relationships with community partners and organizations that play a major role in the district's outreach efforts. These programs, you can see on the screen, range from providing free school supplies, winter coats, food, holiday gifts, and so much more that gives back to students in need, families in need, and those that are part of our Wentzville community. Additionally, on this slide, you'll notice the Superintendent's Roundtable, which is comprised of community members and parent representatives from each of our district schools, and gives them the opportunity to hear directly from the superintendent and receive updates on all things related to the district. The district awards banquet, which we have had virtually the past two years, is also planned by our department. It recognizes our Teachers of the Year, Support Staff Employees of the Year, retirees, and our milestone employees. The past two years, as I mentioned, we have not held this in person, but typically in a regular year is a very positive celebration of all of our staff. And finally, we recently completed the communications survey, and I wanted to provide you with some key takeaways from that. Of note, the district website remains the most popular location for families to find information, while those who need information directly related to their child's school usually turn to their school website. Text messaging is the most preferred method of communication when schools are closed due to six, to inclement weather. And 36% of respondents said that they prefer to receive that inclement weather phone message or text message within the 5:00 AM to 5:30 AM window. And finally, 69% of respondents said that they prefer to receive flyers, which we switched to the electronic format via Peachjar. That is the conclusion of my report. I would be happy to take any questions.
I like the fact that we have more likes than the other districts, so. But I do have a question. As it relates to communications that come from the, so this was a great presentation on the district level communications. As it relates to building level communications, Derek, could you just explain or describe, you know, your team's role in that, how, how that's coordinated back to the district level? And, and what synergies, if any, are created from that process?
Yeah, sure. So we actually ask all building administrators, when they have newsletters, to run those by our office, just in case. We want to make sure that they have all the important information that needs to be included. For example, information that we're going to share Friday in district e-news. We may also want to have buildings include that information, so parents have a more direct, and another way of having eyeballs on that. Not just for proofreading purposes, but also for content purposes. We, with our, within our team, we do a pretty good job of making sure we have all of our i's dotted, i's dotted and t's crossed with that, with that process. It's just a matter of making sure that we have that clear line of communication with the buildings, that they share that with us. So, so far, so good. Things have been very, very good on that. Our, our building admins have been very good at using the email newsletter system to share information with the families.
Thanks for all the great work you do.
Thanks.
Up next is the assessment. I can't get to the right thing.
So we wanted to provide the board with a student learning data update in terms of what did happen this past school year. I've referenced a couple of times this back-to-school message that, that was shared with staff and talked about unfinished learning. We fully recognize we have some unfinished learning that we need to engage in. But, but there are points of celebration, and more importantly, there are places of growth that we want to highlight and just make the board aware of in terms of what happened last year, and look forward to that continued growth this year. So Sherri Bertrand, our Director of Assessment, will provide this update.
Thank you, Dr. Banks. Good evening, board. As we all know, COVID-19 upended classrooms, campuses across the country. In response, educators, staff, and school leaders at all educational levels in all parts of the country-
Excuse me, can you, can you move your microphone over just a little bit? We can, we can't hear you very well. Thank you.
Including Wentzville School District made extraordinary commitments and dedicated their time, talents, energy, and resources to address the needs of all students and their families. Tonight, I'm very pleased to share with you that despite everything that happened last year, our students still learned and grew. So I'm going to speak first to the IREDDI data. IREDDI is a criterion-referenced assessment. A criterion-referenced assessment simply means it's a process of evaluating the learning of students against a set of standards. Nationally, IREDDI assesses 10 million students. In the state of Missouri, it assesses 300,000 students. In Wentzville, in the, in the fall, it, it, we assessed 11,000, and in the fall and spring, 10,000 students. So if we want to look at this first graph, what this does is it looks at, looking at their reading scales score comparison, the red bar is the national 18-19 pre-pandemic data. The green bar is the Missouri 18-19 pre-pandemic data, and the blue bar is the WSD 2021 data. On the graph, you will see second, fifth, and eighth grade. Second grade was chosen because these students had a normal year in kindergarten. First grade was shut down, and second grade was during the pandemic year. Fifth and eighth grade was chosen because these are transitional years. Eighth grade is looked at when comparing nationally and international students. As you can see, WSD is outperforming national and state normal year averages in a pandemic year. So we outscored what we did pre-pandemic nationally. The next slide is the same, same data with, with math. National state average prior to pandemic and the WSD during the pandemic. Second and fifth grade held steady, while eighth grade outperformed nationally pre-pandemic data by 15 points on the scale score, which is absolutely amazing. The next, the next slide continues with IREDDI data, and this is looking at students who are at or above grade level. So the, the national benchmarks prior to pre-pandemic is the first graph. National is during 2021 is the second graph. And the third graph is our district during the 2021 school year. WSD has more students on or above grade level than the nation's non-pandemic year. In math, it's the same chart. Na, um, national and WSD benchmarks during the pandemic. WSD was 2% less. We scored 2% less at our above, at our above grade level than the 18-19 school year for nationally. In the non-pandemic school year, more students are at, during the, I'm so sorry, only 2% less students on or above grade level than the nation's non-pandemic year, and more students on or above grade level in the nation's pandemic year. So our district is outperforming Missouri all over the place. This next graph is Missouri, is Wentzville compared to Wentzville. So this, this shows the students' reading placement change from fall to spring. Wentzville increased the number of students reading on or above grade level by 16 percentage points from the fall to the spring. And this data is only looking at students who took both fall and spring. 16%. Going, moving to math. This shows that the district's math placement changed from fall 2021 to the spring 2021. Wentzville increased the number of students in math on or above grade level by 26 percentage points. I'm going to move now to Fontis and Pennell data. This is reading data that, and the data is from students in grades one through five who had reading data in both September and May. So what you will see is we always look for students to have one year's growth. No matter where they're starting, we want them to have one year's growth in reading. With our FMP data, the district had 76.9% of the, of in-person students and 74.3% of virtual students end the year on track or exceeding expectations of the one year's growth. And then not to be outdone, we, looking at high school, which there are two things that we think are very, very important, is graduation rates. Graduation rates for 2021 stayed consistent with the two prior years, including the shutdown and the non-normal year. Two of our high schools increased their graduation rates. Timberland was up 0.2 point percent points, and Liberty was up 1.4 percentage points of graduation. And then last, ACT scores for graduating seniors. Our average ACT score for 2021 stayed consistent with the two years prior, including the shutdown and the normal year. In 2020, our average composite score was 22.2. In 2021, it was 22.5. Education was really hard last year. There's no other way to saying it. Yet our district leaders, teachers, custodians, support staff, technology, every employment group in our district worked tirelessly for every student in our district. I, I am exceedingly proud of the Wentzville School District and, and always putting kids first. We know we are not done, and while we celebrate our successes, we know that there is unfinished learning, and we are confident that our teachers are up for this task. Any questions?
That was fantastic.
Thank you.
That is fantastic. Applaud, teacher, teachers that are here. We all talk about how last year was tough. To see that data that way, put that way, describe that way with passion, fantastic.
Yeah, I would piggyback on that and just say, you know, we've had to have really hard conversations and, about things that no one really wants to talk about. And so it's really great to be able to celebrate that great news. So thank you for putting that together.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. So first up, we have COVID leave proposal.
Make a motion to approve the COVID leave proposal as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second? Do we have any discussion or is there a presentation on that?
No.
Okay. Any questions?
Is this something we use for, with the Easter funds? Probably a Rick question.
I don't believe that we will need the, the Easter funds on these. If, if you think about how this cost will come through and hit the books, when a person has COVID, they will be using COVID leave rather than sick leave.
Okay.
All right, no further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Next up is a position request for nurses.
Make a motion to approve the position request for nurses as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second? Any questions or discussion on this item? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. 12.3, new middle school naming process. And I think we'll need to discuss this just a bit before we make the motion on this one. Do we have some presentation on this piece?
It's that time again, right, to name another building in the Wentzville School District? You have three different options that you can elect that, given your direction, we will then follow in terms of a naming process. We have used a combination of gathering submissions from, from students and/or others within our community in the past, as we did with North Point High School. And so that process appeared to work quite well with that high school. So that could work with this fourth middle school as well. But it's ultimately the direction of the board in terms of how we will name that fourth middle school.
I'll make a motion that we select number one for the students to name the new middle school.
Second. Motion and a second? Secretary Schaefer, would you be open to a friendly amendment to include staff as well? Students and staff?
I think in the past, it's all been all students have came up with the names. Now I will not say, in some cases, maybe they've been directed, but they came up with the name.
Any other discussion on that one?
I'd like to say that when I was touring schools earlier in the year, I saw that many of the principals did just little kind things that made all of the children feel so included. And I, and I know that they appreciated that, and I know I appreciated that. So I, I agree with Director Schaefer. I want the kids to pick out the name.
All right, so we have a motion to select the name for Melissa's suggestions made by district students. Any other comments before we vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. New middle school change order 10.
I would like to make the motion to approve the new middle school change order 10 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any questions or discussion on this item?
I have a couple of questions.
I would just say Mr. Blanton is going above and beyond being here. His attire is not a indication of a lack of professionalism, but he's really going above and beyond to be here, so, thank you.
I guess my question on this is, did, did they have in the contract that the Wentzville School District is responsible for the inflation of materials on this project? And if so, up to what percentage?
I would like to answer that question. During the construction of this contract, we worked with Leo very hard on getting the, the toughest force majeure clause that we could in this contract. The force majeure clause that we went with in this contract, which is a pandemic clause, for those of you who don't know what a force majeure clause is, covers pandemics, riots, things like that. The force majeure clause is, was very much in our favor. But to the degree that it was in our favor, yes, this is well within the force majeure clause in the contract. We did the best we could with that contract, and yes, this is within the contract. And we have discussed the direction we should go with our legal department, and this is the direction that we have come up with.
So since how we're probably midway through that project, why are we assessing the value of this on all the material for copper prices before the project ends? And why are we paying it before the work has been done and the project is over? Because those prices could go down.
I'll let John answer that one, Mr. Blanton.
We have to pay, the material has to be paid for when it's shipped. The contractor does need to order the material. We did wait as long as we could. Copper did start to come down, but now we need to get the material on site.
So that, so you're implying they're going to buy out the material for this project? And we're going to be- And we're going to be locked in at that rate, whether it goes up or down? For the remainder of the project?
Correct.
I have a question for you, Mr. Blanton. What are you seeing now in the industry of home building and such like that? We're seeing delays, supplies and such like that. Do you expect to anticipate? I'm sorry, I forgot exactly when we're going to be finished with this and we've got another year and a half, something like that. So do we expect any delays on these materials at all?
We're monitoring that closely. Right now, prices seem to have basically leveled off, give or take. However, we are experiencing long lead times on different material.
Thank you.
President Bates, I got a question if I could, please. A section, second this here motion for discussion for the purpose. As we're talking about copper, doesn't our HVAC also have a copper within it? As for some of the piping?
Yes, there is copper piping in plumbing and HVAC.
So are we looking at a price increase on that also?
That has not been requested at this time.
So then if it affects one, how does it not affect the other or vice versa?
We have not received a request for additional funds at this time.
Would I be correct in saying that our copper purchase for the HVAC is greater than the electrical wire? When you're talking about the material of copper in itself?
I really don't know which is greater. Copper wire is solid, but plumbing pipe can get quite big in diameter.
Do you have any ideas about, as you said, we will have delivery delays? Do you have any idea where those deliveries, the delays are actually at? Are they stateside? Are they, are they abroad? Do you have any idea at all?
No, I do not.
Thank you.
I would also like to say regarding the prices. A lot of this depends upon when the subcontractors have actually purchased the materials and what materials they had on hand on whether they have to increase the prices. It does make a difference whether the contractor had this material or did not have this material at the time that the, the price went up.
Any other discussion?
Yes. Is it not the job of the subcontractor when they turn in their bid to the general? To have their cost of materials for the job that they're going to perform?
Absolutely, but what we could not get away from, and we did work with legal on this, but what we could not get away from was not having a force majeure clause at all in the contract. Which means generally all construction contracts, all large construction contracts have a force majeure clause. Which means if a pandemic strikes, it gives them the opportunity. If they can prove that the, the cost was based on the pandemic. And we believe that they could at this point in time. And we've been informed that they do have good grounds at this point in time to state that the increase in the price is due to, due to the pandemic. And yes, the contract allows the change of the price if that occurs and if they can show that it is caused by the pandemic.
Are they adding a percentage of profit to this price? So what did legal say about that?
The contract, the contract allows for that on a change order?
Up to what percent?
I believe it's twelve.
Are we changing any situations of how we're ordering? Because, you know, needless to say, the entire nation is hearing about inflation and this is just the beginning. So is there anything that we're doing that we can think about doing to help us hedge that situation?
We're ordering as quickly as we can to try and lock it in and to minimize any shipment delays.
And another issue is so many people are trying to order ahead that it's making things worse.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. New middle school traffic signal bids.
I make a motion to approve the new middle school traffic signal bid as presented.
We have a motion and a second? Anything to present on this item? Any questions or discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. North Point High School change order thirty-five.
I make a motion to approve the North Point High School change order thirty-five as presented.
Motion and a second? Any discussion or questions on this item? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. New middle school easement.
I make a motion to approve the new middle school easement as presented.
We have a motion and a second? Any questions or discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Holt High School Industrial Technology Classroom renovation.
I make a motion to not approve the Holt High School Industrial Technology Classroom renovation as presented.
Motion and a second? Discussion on this item?
I would like to not approve this as we just saw on change order ten that material prices are really high right now. They will go down. I think building costs, everything's real high right now. Director Stoli and I had walked a couple of schools that I feel as if needs more attention than this Holt High School Industrial Technology Classroom. And I know that there's a couple of us on the Maintenance and Building Committee that is formed and we're meeting in September. So I would like to take a better look at it at that point. And that's why I'm voting against it.
Do you have some information on that, John?
Yes, this is just for the design portion. We could wait to bid this until we felt like the bidding market was more favorable. But by doing the design now, we'd be ready to put that on the street in thirty days' notice if we did complete the design now.
Yes, I would also like to make a comment that without this design being done, the Construction Committee will not know what needs to be done and what the cost will be or estimated cost will be for this project. We know that there are some issues that need to be taken care of with the air quality. And there's a lot of different ways that can be done. And what the, what we're doing here is just having owner determine what needs to be done or can be done and do the architect work. This is not at all moving forward with the project itself. And the Construction Committee will never know the dollars involved and what it's going to take until we have an architect look at this first.
But that's what I'm saying. So they're going to set a budget for you guys off of their design and that's going to be presented to us. So if we're not looking to do it within six months, prices on all that can change. And then we're looking, everyone's going to have to get a different budget. I mean, we're going to have to reevaluate the budget on that project at that point.
That, that's a, a very good point. But what I, I will say is that just as when we, we had architects make designs in our previous buildings, we did not know what the bids were going to come in. And yes, the bids are going to come in at higher low based on when the actual bidding is done. But the actual work that needs to be done still needs to be designed by the architect.
Was this, was this one of, real quick, if I may, President Bates? I said, if I may? Was this one of the ones where you had grant money specific for, there, there was, it's fax?
Got it.
Fax.
All right. Any other discussion? So right now, the motion on the floor is to not approve the Industrial Technology Classroom renovation. All right. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay? So motion carries. So yeah, that will not move forward at this time. Next up, Timberland High School fax room bids.
I would like to make a motion to table the Timberland High School fax room bids as presented.
Yeah, and I think we, we don't mean table. Do you mean postpone or move to another meeting? Because table means we would pick it back up.
Yeah, postpone to a future date undecided that we can also discuss in the Maintenance and Building Committee as well as we look at the priorities of this district and what other schools I think need to be attended to first. And I think Director Stoli has some things she would like to add to that.
Okay. Real, real quick, because it sounded like maybe there was some grant money associated to this item. Can you maybe speak to that?
Yes, we did receive a grant that will pay for a portion of this work. When we did the fax room in this building, it paid for roughly fifty percent. That grant isn't as big this time, but it is still significant. That it would reduce the district's cost by at least a third. Also, if we postpone this, bids are held for thirty days. I can ask the contractor to hold their bid longer than that. But if we exceed the thirty days, which I believe would be September eleventh, then we could have to rebid this.
How long is that grant money good for?
The grant money has to be spent by February, is it? Yes, we have to have this completely done and invoices turned in by February of twenty twenty-two to satisfy the requirements of the grant.
Not built, but the, it has to be built by February twenty twenty-two?
Yes, it has to be completed and all of the invoicing turned in to be, to be reimbursed.
And what's the timeline for completion on this project?
We would start, if the project's approved, we could start ordering the long lead items. Right now, there is long lead on basically anything stainless steel. There's a lot of stainless steel in this proj- project. We're taking it to basically a commercial grade kitchen. We would start construction sometime this fall and have it complete. When we did the fax room in this building, we did it at the very end of the year. So we, at the very end of one semester and at the start of the next semester to minimize impact to students.
So you're saying even if we started now, I mean, we're going to be pushing that February date?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
And the funds are coming from where? And I'll back up on this project as well as the previous.
Fax room will become, go ahead, John.
We budgeted for this project for this fiscal year. And this was on our list of projects to bid that we submitted to the board in February.
Yes, these, these are, to answer your question, Director Shaffer, these are not bond funds. These are actual capital funds from the capital.
Capital projects?
Yes.
And what was this project estimated at?
About six, six hundred thousand or five hundred thousand?
So we're a little bit, we're twenty-five percent over budget then roughly.
And that's roughly what the grant will pay for.
Yeah, our cost is what was included in the budget. The budget was, this particular project was listed in our annual budget at a net cost of five hundred thousand dollars in the budget itself.
That's total all parties.
No, that's our portion. That's how much we have coming out of the capital fund for this project.
So essentially, we're not saving any money. If we budgeted five hundred and it's costing us seven fifty to do this project and that grant's paying for our over budget, then we're not saving according to your budget. So can we reapply for this grant money at a later date?
Uh, next year, but it would be the, the same timetable. We get notification about the grant usually the first week in July. And that money has to be spent there again by February. It's, it's done yearly and you have to move quickly.
So what else? So you're saying we already have the grant money, correct?
We have been notified, yes, we will receive the grant money.
So what else can we use that grant money on? Does it have to be specifically for this job or can we use it on other?
We have to use this grant money for this particular project. And this is actually, it's already, we've already applied for the grant once for this project and put it off for an entire year. So this is actually the second time we've applied for the grant for this. And so the, it's, it's partic- it's specific to enhancement for career tech education programs. This grant is. And it has to be used for the exact thing we applied for.
What happened after the first time we applied for the grant and we received the money, then we just gave it back, correct?
So they, we have to, we just provide them with the invoices in order for them to actually provide us with the money. Like we just show the work is being done for them to give us the money. It's, it's a split cost with the, with D E S I and this, this particular grant. Now, the reason we had to put it off, can you explain a little bit more?
Yes, the pandemic happened.
If I may, question? Just real quick. If I remember right, we've done this renovation on the other high schools?
Yes, in this building, yes.
Okay, it's just Holt.
President Bates?
I, I would also like to say that five hundred thousand dollars was always the cost that we had anticipated to use out of the capital fund. The five hundred is our cost. We, we never, we assume that the total cost would be higher than this. But the budget of what we would spend is five hundred and I believe will be well within that.
So because of delays and things like that, if we were to encounter, do you have any experience with any extensions whatsoever that we've ever been given because of COVID or anything else?
It has not been our experience that with the grant funds, we would have extensions. They look for it to be completed or we lose access to the funds.
So have we had situations like this before where we have trouble with getting materials?
To my knowledge, not with this particular grant that we're talking about, no.
But if we did have that, just, I mean, what would, what's normal procedure for a grant? From the standpoint that, again, I think we're looking at some very unprecedented times right now. Again, you know, the housing market, everything else in the way of building and supplies. And some of it doesn't come from the United States any longer. So I'm saying, so if we were to incur a delay in having it done by February, you said?
Yes.
All right. So then what happens? Would, given the circumstances, are you allowed a waiver? Or do you know?
To my knowledge, no, we are not. The money has to be spent within the time we are allotted.
All right. Any other con- discussion?
Clarification on the motion. Vice President Bryce, seconded by Director Stoli, made Vice President Bryce, seconded by Director Stoli, made a motion to postpone the Timberland High School fax room as presented. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So again, motion on the table is to postpone this item. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Nay. All right, we will not be moving forward with this item at this time. I think it was four to three. We can roll call it. Kathy, can you help that?
Before we do a roll call, sorry, excuse me, President Bates, before we do a roll call, can may I add a comment? So this has some context with within the item on the agenda. I would like to see, I mean, Director Bryce had said that he and I had visited, you know, a handful of schools over the summer. Based upon. This item and the previous item on the agenda as it relates to new business, I I would I would like to see us as a district move forward with a comprehensive facility maintenance plan. Which outlines a report of what the maintenance needs are for each individual facility within our school district. So that when recommendations like this come to the Board of Education, we are very aware of the conditions of our building, especially our legacy buildings. And I just wanted to to also add that. I I would really like to see us as a district get back on track with the MSIP Annual Performance Report. The last report that I I could find and perhaps I missed, maybe we have another more recent one was in February of twenty twenty. Which gives the overall report of our facilities within the district. So again, I'm not I'm not looking for anything to be passed. I'm just looking for. Board support on direction to give the administration as it relates to those two things.
I would just say that I think there's a natural offshoot that's going to occur as a result of the Construction and Maintenance Committee. There's a dovetail there. I'm not exactly sure what that looks like at this point in time, but I do think there's a. There's a place of intersection that's going to make some sense.
But I guess what I'm trying to say is I'm trying to expedite that. Is this something necessarily that needs to go through the Construction Committee per se? Is this something the board could give direction on right now?
For this project?
No, not this project, just I I'm saying the two things with the Comprehensive Facilities Maintenance Plan. And the MSIP. Annual Performance Report as it relates to buildings, just just direction on those two items. Is that something that really needs requires to go to committee first for the board to provide direction?
So facilities report as a part of our 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 C, you said MSIP as part of our C sub?
It's called the Missouri School Improvement Program within our board docs and it's Annual Performance Report Evaluation. The last one we did was in February twenty twenty, which outlines our maintenance departments, the number of work orders that we do within our district, et cetera. Which I'm assuming we're behind because of COVID and that was an impact to this. It was last done in February of twenty twenty and I'm assuming like it says it's annual. So I'm just asking if for support from, you know, the will of the board, if we could just, you know, trying to get us back on track. And and just, you know, adding in addition to that to have a comprehensive facility maintenance plan that literally looks at all of our buildings, prioritizes the needs of our buildings. And then within that lists the type of work that we need to be done in our buildings.
This is a joke because Cabinet's only going to get it. At one point I had eighty tabs up here, separate conversation, but one of my tabs actually was about program evaluations. And our facilities one is a biannual one, so it occurs every other year. So it's not that we're necessarily off, but it was February, you said February of twenty. February twenty is the last time that we have one. We are tentatively scheduled to have one in February two thousand and twenty-two, so I think we're actually on track. I am hoping we can actually dovetail some of the construction and maintenance conversation into that work, so. That's a very long way to say, yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Director Stoli, I I agree with your point and and I think that the committee meets on September ninth is the date for that meeting. I mean, certainly one of the first things out of the gate for me is is basically a description as described there. How how do we understand what is our collective set of priorities as a district related to maintenance and construction? And therefore makes these decisions about whether or not we should do this or that a lot easier. That makes this process in terms of approval, what's our priority, should we wait, should we not, you know, very clear. So that should be to me, one of the very first things we talk about. Maybe that's a dovetail to the, you know, the February February output. But I echo Director Stoli's points.
All right, so remember the motion is to postpone the work on this item and we're going to have a roll call vote.
Thank you, President Bates. Secretary Shaper? Director Goodson?
Nay.
Vice President Bryce?
Aye.
Director Abbott?
Nay.
President Bates?
Nay.
Director Garber?
Aye.
Director Stoli?
Nay.
All right, so the motion to postpone the work did not pass?
I make a motion to approve the Timberland High School fax rooms bid as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the new motion? All right, let's do the roll call vote again.
Thank you. Was that Director Abbott who seconded?
Yes.
Thank you for your patience. Secretary Shaper? Thank you. Director Goodson?
Aye.
Vice President Bryce? Director Abbott?
Aye.
President Bates?
Aye.
Director Garber?
Nay.
Director Stoli?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. South Middle School Change Order Seven.
I make a motion to approve South Middle School Change Order Seven as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion on this item? All those in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay? Motion carries. South Middle School Change Order Eight.
I make a motion to approve the South Middle School Change Order Eight as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Nay? Motion. Okay, motion carries. Did you get the name? South Middle School Change Order Nine.
I make a motion to approve South Middle School Change Order Nine as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? All those in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay? Motion carries. Last item, Wentzville Middle School Change Order Six.
I make a motion to approve the Wentzville Middle School Change Order Six as presented.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on this item?
I just have a quick point, President Bates.
Yeah.
I walked this building ten days ago or so and then walked it for my children starting seventh grade. The difference between that, when I first saw it to them, was incredible. I know that was not easy to both the administration of the building and the custodians that got it ready. And I know that was probably similar in Frontier and South, so I applaud our administration and our janitorial staff that did that. So that students could walk the halls and see where their classes were, maybe breathe a little bit of sigh of relief. My kids are certainly still nervous and will probably take an opportunity to do it again before school starts, but nonetheless, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. It was incredibly different and I appreciated it.
While while we're on the change order topic for the Timberland Fax Room. Did I know last meeting I made a suggestion that we do T and M for all change orders. Is that the route we went? For this contract on the Timberland Fax Room?
No, it was a design bid build.
Yeah, I know, but for all the change orders, I had made the recommendation that we would go. Time and material for all change orders instead of just getting a random bid that we have nothing to compare it to.
The change orders, are we talking about this one? You had mentioned the Timberland Fax?
Yeah, no, it def, assuming we're going to have change orders in the Timberland Fax, did we write in the contract that all time and material? Would, you know, they can on the time they would make up to a certain percentage that we agree upon and material, they're only allowed to make up a certain percentage that we agree upon. As opposed to them coming to us with a bid that we have nothing to compare it to and it could be as high as they want and then as soon as we say. No to it, then they say, well, you're we're not going to be able to get kids into school in time.
We can do that at any time in our contracts.
But so we can add that to that Timberland before the project starts?
Yes, we can proceed with changes on a time and material basis, yes.
And are you saying we can do that mid-project to any job we have going on right now?
Yes.
Is there a reason we're not doing that?
Typically, we get a hard number from the contractor.
Uh, I just view it more beneficial to get, you know, if the general contractor's job is to watch over these jobs in the best interest of the school district. They the work is done and then the mechanical contractors or any subcontractors get tickets signed for the work they perform. And they're allowed to make, you know, up to a certain amount of percentage. On time and material and I feel as if that would save us a lot more money than them just giving us a random bid and us accepting it.
It it's not a random bid. They do a takeoff, we do a takeoff, we compare. That's our best guess at what it's going to cost. If we do proceed time and material, are we then going to approve change orders by concept without a final number? I'm not sure how that would work. Do I do I do I tell them to proceed without a number to present to the board?
So it it's it's going to do the same thing that you're doing here. You're, you know, they're, I've seen those numbers change. You know, as you presented, then they're, oh, well, that was a little bit under what we thought, so we had to add more money to it. Well, they can estimate how much time and material are going in that job. Give us that hard number percentage that that they're going to charge us that we both agree on and then bring that to the board.
If if we tell them to proceed on time and material, it's not a hard number. It's whatever they spend plus market.
Yeah, I get it, but they can estimate what they think it's going to take in time and material, same thing they're doing when they give us that bid and they decide it wasn't enough, then they come back and get more money.
Sure, if that if, okay, time and material not to exceed, if they're going to exceed.
Right.
Do we have, do we exceed and notify the board at the next meeting or do we stop it right there? Contractors really do like this and it's a it's a very efficient way to do changes, time and material not to exceed. I just I don't see how that works with a once a month board meeting.
So are you saying you don't think it's beneficial for the school district to do that?
Oh, no, that's the exact opposite of what I said. It's a very efficient way to manage changes, time and material not to exceed.
Well, and I feel as if we can work through those small dilemmas on how you presented to the board. I I feel as if we can work through that and I think it would save this district a lot of money and it's keeping everybody honest.
There is a policy that allows for some of this to be approved without coming to this body that we do not use. I would maybe suggest we use that and allow time and material and thus the process to flow smoothly.
Yeah, do you know, is that seventy-five hundred? Yeah.
Seventy-five, ten.
Uh, change orders under the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars do not necessarily need to come to the board. Is ten thousand?
It's like thirty-five thousand.
Oh, thirty-five thousand?
Correct.
Fifteen thousand in non-emergency situations, thirty thousand in emergency situations. And the emergency is whether or not it will delay the completion of the project.
We basically do not push that. We like to be transparent to the board. We bring them to the board in all cases possible. It is very rare that we have gone to Dr. Kane and asked him to enforce this policy. And when we do, we always come back to the board even after this policy has been enforced.
Well, I think it's possible to follow the policy and be transparent and they can, if it's within that allotted amount, it can be in consent agenda, right? And if someone has a question, they can pull it for further discussion, but if it's within that allotted amount, we could show it in consent agenda.
Yes, we've also also, a lot of this could be in consent agenda, but again, in being transparent, we put this in new business and discuss every item. Uh, we we don't generally put any construction item in in the consent agenda just to be completely transparent. We put it all in new business and we even put it in new business, even when we use the policy, which is rare. That allows us to to have an emergency situation approved by Dr. Kane, we still come back and we put that in the business.
President Bates? I just have a hard time figuring out what you're trying to tell us here. You just came to us with a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar price increase bill without a list of nothing. Not what previously was going to be purchased and what the cost was, not not what the new cost is of the exact items. Just a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for a price increase because the cost of material went up. You you gave no justification or no variance on that.
The project manager has reviewed that with the architect and the contractor, that entire list.
But where's where's the justification verification? Where's the justification that that the cost of materials is a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars?
We worked through that with the contractor before I presented it to the board. We know the price they had for copper on bid day. We know the price of copper when they priced the change order.
You're talking about the price of copper, but he's not buying the copper. He's buying copper wiring.
Yes, the wiring, yes, the different size feeders, yes, we do have that.
I I would also like to say that all change orders that that you see here, we we start with, you know, the the statement that all the data relating to this change order and how these numbers have been. Uh, put together are in in our office at the administrative center. I can say that some of these documents can be two, three and four inches thick on every change order that you see. And at at all times, we have complete documentation to back up these dollars. We don't just come up with a number such as that. That number was verified by by at least three groups and the number was verified not only with the the starting amount of copper. Uh, that was supposed to be used, but also the price of the copper that it was originally priced at and the current change in the copper prices.
I think we have a motion on the table.
I know, I was trying to get back to it. I believe it's the the motion for the Wentzville Middle School Change Order. Six. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Nay? Motion carries. All right, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, we need a second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.